We'll get started with our meeting. Before we start, we'll have a prayer of Councilman Wright. I'm looking down here and you up here. Councilman Wright, followed by pledge, list, and the flag.
Would you join us? Heavenly Father, we give thanks for all that we have in this life and may we continue to recognize that we're just mere mortals and we're in need of your divine guidance to help us as we carry on in this life. Help us to conduct the business of our town to the best of our ability and may your guidance abound in our minds, giving us the ability to make sound decisions. Bless all those attendants here tonight as well as those throughout our community. We give all the credit to you for any successes that we obtain in this life.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy?
Here.
Betty Holly?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Sam Russell?
Here.
Lonnie Wright?
Here.
Third form. Vote to approve minutes in September 6, 2016. Meeting, so a motion. Motion. Second. 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 Councilman Holly?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have anything to add to it? Congratulations, minutes. Carl Rowe?
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the bills. Move them up.
Motion.
Have a motion. Second. Second. Councilman Ader?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Carl Rowe?
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Now it's our own business here, delegation. Anybody in the audience want to address council, please stand, state your name, and note your comments to about three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Elise Porter. I live in 501 Cumberland Street at the corner of Cumberland and Queen. And been in the area about five years and moved in the house about a year and a half ago. And one of the things that I really loved about being there and working in my yard was hearing the siren at noon. It reminded me of my small farm town community where they would blow the siren from the fire department and the church bells. And I just wondered if it broke or is that going to be something that I'll be able to hear in the future?
Kevin, you have anything to add?
I can speak to that. When I came here, I had a couple complaints from the siren going off at noon, so I stopped doing that. So if we want to do it, we have no problem doing it. The only problem is it's not on a timer. So if we do it, people can't set their clock by it. We may or may not get it done right at noon.
I just love, that was such a small town, because that always indicated to the field workers that it was time to eat and it was time to have lunch. And I know in another small town, I went to the ring, the old fireman's bell. So I just, I just say, I miss, I miss that. I miss that, that small town.
Whatever, whatever the council wants us to. But again, it wouldn't be right on time, and I don't know if we want to do it every day or... I've also, again, heard the other way, not to do it, so.
Chief, I have to weigh in on that. I was very glad once it stopped.
Oh, I forgot.
My office being directly across the street has disrupted business conversations on multiple occasions. So for me, it's a very good thing that you don't do it anymore, so. But I certainly understand the nostalgic aspect of it, too, at least.
You have a council member, everything?
I heard, I heard something general about it, if I do it in favor. And then I also heard that there might be some people in the area who worked their third shift.
That was the complaint that I had. Any council that has in time, if you make an affiliate with the chief and cabinet, if you and chief just come to conclusion as to what you want to do and let everybody know what's true. Anybody else from the audience?
John Dennis from Rockland. If anybody in here that I have to tell that this is a great land we live in, America, it's a promised land, and people come to us a thousand years, go back from the Tower of Abel, and to before Christ and after Christ, and our pilgrims. Christopher Columbus, when he came, he felt compelled by the Spirit of the Lord. He went to the king of Spain and begged to have the warriors to travel and the crew to travel west. And they traveled, and there were only two ships, and there was a lot of turbulence, and they barely made it there. The crew wanted to turn back, and Christopher, Christo Paul Clon, asked them, I said, we just wait 48 more hours to try to find this promised land or rediscover. And they did. And they gave him 48 hours, and he went to his cabin and prayed to his heavenly Father. And the next morning, they came to this great land of America and rediscovered it. He said, when he went to the king of Spain, he said, "Our Lord unlocked my mind, sent me upon the sea, and gave me fire for the deed. Those who heard my empries called it foolish, mocked me and laughed; but who can doubt that the Holy Ghost inspired me?" And likewise, our founding fathers, I believe with all my heart that they had the inspiration. Not only did they want freedom from bondage and religion, they felt the inspiration to set sail and come to this great land. And I believe the Lord inspired them to do our, make our constitution. In the Declaration, they said that "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, among these being the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." I don't want to preach too much more, but there was a man named Samuel Smith back in the 1800s, he was born in 1808 and died in 1895. And he took some music that was formed 100 percent years prior from London, from the source Mesica in 1744. And he took the words, and they became a great hymn. And that song, if I may recite it, is, "My country, tis of thee, great sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims' tribe; from every mountain side, let freedom ring. My native country, thee, land of the noble trade; thy name I love. I love thy rocks and rills, thy woods and temple hills; my heart with rapture thrills like that above. Let music swell the breeze, and ring from all the trees, sweet freedom song. Let mortal tongues awake, let all the breeze partake; let rocks their silence break, the sound prolong. Our Father's God, to thee, Author of liberty, to thee we sing. Long may our land be bright, with freedom's holy light. Protect us by thy mighty, great God, our King." Appreciate y'all serving in the capacity, and we're in a struggle now for religious freedom and our rights for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. A lot of people wanting to come to this land, and America's a great country, and they want their life like we have, the freedom to worship, how we're and what they make. So they will strive toward making a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other delegation? Own business. Councilman Russell, any own business?
I have a...
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir, I don't have any.
Councilman Ader?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wright?
No.
Councilman Holly, please. Kevin?
Yes.
Claudia, any own business?
No.
Just a couple things. The, I know that you all met last week to discuss the behind process of the chief financial officer and the judge. I'd like first maybe tonight to look at setting a date of maybe next Thursday at 2:00 to do the interviews. If that works with you all, we can go ahead and get our interview process started, by the way. I'd also like, if you, I think if you have any questions, you should get with the city manager and let him know of any. He will be working on questions and stuff. If each of you want to come down and meet with him and look and talk about the interview process, feel free to do that. But we'll set that at the 22nd, 2:00.
Yes, I would just note, as council requested, I did talk with Intas about the process. The only thing specific that they recommended was, obviously, as we've discussed, developing a set list of questions that we would ask of all candidates. We may deviate from that towards the end, if you might have follow-up questions with regard to some of the responses. But they also recommended, because of the number of people on the hiring board, the council consider appointing a specific moderator or two that would be responsible for asking the questions that were initially developed, just to kind of keep a routine throughout the process for all the candidates.
And that's something we can discuss in the workshop next week as far as who's going to be moderator and stuff for meeting, if I so think, you all.
Maybe if I could, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Ader. She's here to introduce herself as the city health officer.
And that's something we can discuss in the workshop next week as far as who's going to be moderator and stuff for meeting, if I so think, you all.
Maybe if I could, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Ader. She's here to introduce herself as the city health officer.
And that's something we can discuss in the workshop next week as far as who's going to be moderator and stuff for meeting, if I so think, you all.
Maybe if I could, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Ader. She's here to introduce herself as the city health officer.
And that's something we can discuss in the workshop next week as far as who's going to be moderator and stuff for meeting, if I so think, you all.
Maybe if I could, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Ader. She's here to introduce herself as the city health officer.
And that's something we can discuss in the workshop next week as far as who's going to be moderator and stuff for meeting, if I so think, you all.
Do we need to have, do we need to bug them to time? Can we just set time? I don't know that you have to. I would recommend, just from personal observation and having taken kids through the hospital last year, there was a tremendous crowd. It took quite a while to get through the hospital. At one point, the line was lined up from the emergency entrance doors almost to the Simply Suites Bakery. Because of that, and the fact that our smaller kids, we don't want to be out too late on a school night, I would recommend going in starting at 5:00, particularly for the hospital around.
Can we go ahead and get a motion to start at 5:00 to 5:08? Just go ahead and get it. Motion. Second. Motion of Councilman Wright, second. Councilman Ader, Councilman Wright. Councilman Ader?
Yes, sir.
Any other council? All in favor of the aye? Anyone pose white sign? If you care. There's all the own business I have. Department reports. Department?
I put the monthly report, probably as month that kind of we have, about the same average, 110 calls, about the same average, 71 percent EMS, pretty normal. You'll see, the only difference is we're starting to use that new emergency reporting system we've got, so. Your report, monthly report, will be a little different probably each month as we build all of the rest of those modules. In fact, if you've got any questions, you can...
Do you have a council have any questions? Fire chief?
I got one, chief.
Yes, sir.
I noticed by the pie chart that about 72 percent of our activities was rescue and emergency medical. Is that responding likely to residents who are calling in with some sort of medical problems?
Yes, sir.
That's about 72 percent. That first responder pickup truck, we stay up for two people now, and that's the national average, really, 70 to 80 percent of fire departments that run EMS, they're about, I mean, that run EMS, and fires and everything else, about 70, 80 percent are EMS calls. We get there, stabilize a patient, as you know, till the ambulance gets there. If it's a significant incident, significant illness or trauma, then we'll ride with the ambulance to hospital.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Police department?
We have nothing to report at this time.
Public works. I did see the striping going down on the streets today. It looks really good. Noticed it on Emery Street, which is, I know is going to be a big plus now we've got some stripes to go by when we're running that road because it is so parallel. But the striping does look good. Action rig. Treasure.
Just update you, we are in a phase of doing property tax mail-out, putting together the, all the information necessary to do that. We're also moving into doing our annual financial report, which we'll be meeting with the auditors at the end of this month.
Anybody have anything?
I've got something. I noticed in Knoxville, right when you're getting right past the North Shore, they've got those things painted on the road for the interstate exit. And, you know, at 640 and 75, I noticed down here by McDonald's, a lot of people will get over in that left lane, and they're, it's usually the elderly, and they're thinking they're going to Knoxville, well, they're getting ready to turn, and they're headed towards Roswell, well, they just, they swerve right up front of you. I was just curious if they would be, if they can check, I don't know what it would cost, but get those, you know, get those painted right there at that exit, and that way they'll know.
For the Easter, where he was.
Yep. I think that would, because there's a lot of accidents right there.
Could be a T-Dot issue.
Yeah. I think that would be good if we had something like that, because it's, I mean, I know, me personally, I've had three or four people pull in there and just cut right, I had to swerve clean out of lane to keep from hitting, and they were from out of town.
I think we've got a meeting set up for T-Dot next week, and we'll bring it, and see what they say about it.
I believe that would cause a lot less confusion.
Councilman Forrest, last gift, but he's got a report here. Do you have anything on the report?
I was just going to note for the record that he did submit a written report, and he is out on a call right now, so that's why he's not here this evening. No, I've got a couple things, if you're reading the report, or...
Go ahead. Read.
Last, last week, the council had a question about the status of the Margate Bridge project. I did follow up with T-Dot on that. They have, there was some sort of minor issue with regard to the design drawings, and so they've amended that, and they have to submit that to the Department of Southern to have them sign off on the design change. So they're, it's pending the railroad's approval at this point, and once presumably they approve the change, they'll be ready to start construction. Also, you have a written report with regard to our current status on the paving project. Also, a, which is a spreadsheet that you've been receiving periodically throughout the project, but also there's a written report that indicates to you the remaining work that's still to be done, as well as a estimated budget continuing through the end of the project, where at this point in time, we are hopeful that we're going to be able to go back and pick up a few extra streets to be able to include within this, because at the present, we appear to be coming in under the projected budget. But until we get a little closer to completing the project, we're not quite ready to add streets to the project yet.
Do you want to have anything, city manager? Allison, you have anything on any business?
No.
Committee reports. Now, we're going to agenda, discuss, and possibly approve extension of paving contract with Rogers.
When we did the bids earlier this year for the paving project, the bids awarded to Rogers Group, the specifications stated that the initial term of the agreement would expire December 31, 2016. However, with mutual agreement of the two parties, there was an option to extend it for an additional year, December 31, 2017. So what I'm asking is for council to authorize the mayor to, if Rogers Group is agreeable, to execute that extension to December 31, 2017. We are not committed to purchase anything by extending the contract. It simply locks in the pricing and bidding mechanism that we utilize, so that if we do need to do additional paving after December 31, we would not have to go through another bid process. The primary item within the project, the asphalt, is based on the index that floats with primarily fuel prices, but there's a few things that goes into it. So it's been changing throughout the portion of the project anyway, and we continue to do so long into next year if we choose to extend it. Also, we do have at least one street that is owned or in our current paving project that needs some fairly significant drainage improvements before we do the pavement. As a result, it is possible that at least that one street would not be able to be paved until the spring. So if that's the case, we would certainly need the contract meeting place to do it or a new bid happening.
Need a motion to extend the Rogers Group contract to December 31, 2017. Vote. Motion second. Second. Motion by Councilman Wright, second. Councilman Holly? Councilman Wright?
That's, Rogers Group's about to owe a gain and pay on the, so we'll lock everything in, but it's right down there.
Councilman Howard?
Yes.
Any other comments? Carl Rowe?
Chris Sager?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussion, possibly approved, and questioning qualifications for engineering services related to the ST BG Fund, Margate Drive Project.
We recently received our executed contract back from T-Dot for the improvements that we're planning for Margate Drive and Carter Street to tie in to the bridge once it's complete, using the federal funds that have been made available to us on an annual basis. This is a project that would take several years to complete, and the funding is allocated by the federal government annually through 2020. The next step in the process would be for us to choose a design consultant for the project, as well, the same consultant would seek the environmental clearances that we need for the project. And so what I'm recommending, asking council to approve, is for the city to adopt the local government guidelines, Form 1-2, which you have a copy of. It's a T-Dot standard, which is a consultant selection policy for projects funded with federal highway transportation dollars. And then, in particular, if you look at page 14 of that document, there is a small projects procurement procedure, which is authorized for procuring services that will be less than $150,000, which our environmental clearance and design would be. So that would be the mechanism which we would utilize to select someone, engineering firm to do the design of the project.
Have a motion to accept the recommendation to adopt Form 1-2?
I make the motion, do it on the table.
Second. Motion of Councilman Wright, second. Councilman Ader, Councilman Wright.
Are we the only, are we the only party that's responsible for paying for this activity?
The federal funds, depending on the different components of a project, will pay between 80% and 100% of the items included in the project. If it's a safety item or an item that would be at the intersection with the state highway, they will fund 100% of it. If it's like solely an item that we include into the project, then they will only fund 80%. An example of that would be resurfacing, the apartment plan would be to resurface Margate, at least from Oakdale Highway down to Carter, Carter-Margate up to Round Street. They would pay 80% of the servicing, we would pay 20%. Now, if it was a, if we replace the signal at the Oakdale Highway, they'll pay 100% for the signal replacement. Certain safety features like striping, new signs for the area that meet the new standards that are required, they'll pay 100% on those items. So we really want to know until we do the design and set the budget exactly what our contribution will be, but we would not exceed 20% of the project. contribution will be, but it would not exceed 20% of the project. And these are, just to give you an idea, you've probably in the past heard these funds referred to as surface transportation funds. Cities have been receiving them for years. Every time they do, they do a federal transportation authorization bill, they rename it, so the acronym becomes something different, but that's essentially what this project is.
Those are not, those are not funds we receive every year.
We, generally, we do, and historically, Congress would adopt a three- or five-year transportation plan. When they did that, while you receive the funds annually, you know when they adopt the plan, how much money you're gonna get each year for the period of three or five years. Because the federal government has not adopted a budget in a while, we have only been getting annual allotments, so you never could plan for the future. So, for the City of Harriman, we receive about $75,000 a year. Well, $75,000 doesn't go a long way towards a big road project. But when you only get the money a year at a time, you don't want to commit yourself to something you don't be sure that you're gonna get, so we've been trying to spend it a year at a time. For the first time in probably about eight years, Congress passed a long-term transportation plan, so we know that through 2020, we're gonna get that amount of money each year, so that we can pull all that money together into one big project.
One more question. Do we have any idea of ballpark figure of the total cost?
My, it depends on what we decide we want to include. I know there's been conversation about trying to build in some traffic calming mechanisms with the bridge opening back up, trying to slow the traffic and everything. It just depends on to what extent we want to go with things of that nature to be included in the project, but the money is there for us to use. I have to go back, I know I mentioned it in one of the prior meetings, because we've got some money from prior years, and we've got money going forward. I can't remember exactly what the total is, but my expectation would be that we would spend it all resurfacing as much of the street as the money will allow. When you look at Margate, the amount of money needed to resurface the entire street would exceed the amount of money we're gonna receive anyway. But like where, you know, the project we're doing now, that's 100% local dollars to resurface and strip the street. While we might be doing a few extra things as part of the project, the core thing that we're doing is resurfacing Margate and Carter, and we're doing it at 80% of federal dollars.
So the 20% would come from the general fund or some 12%?
Thanks, sir.
Regarding the traffic calming aspects, I know some of that can actually appear as, I would describe, beautification in some ways as well, makes it a more appealing thoroughfare. Would those, would the dollars for that come from this at all, or is that, is that 100% city money?
As long as it's a select beautification, it serves a traffic and transportation purpose, then they would pay at least 80% on the items.
And we have the discretion to selectively choose what we want as those traffic calming items?
As long as they conform with uniform traffic standards.
And since it's a safety, there's a chance it would be 100%?
It is possible.
You have questions? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
At this time, we'll discuss and approve board appointments. When I took over, we probably got 20 or 25 board appointments. We won't do them all tonight, we'll go through maybe half of them, and the way I like to do it is I go through each department, and I'll let you know the term of the replacing, and how long the term's for. And me and Teresa's been working on this thing, and it is, we're getting it straightened out. But the Harriman Planning Commission, I'd like to appoint Jim Neely, which is replacing Joe Jones, which is stepping off the board for family reasons, and his term would be September 2016 through September the first, 2018. Motion, motion?
Second.
Motion, second. Motion by Councilman Russell, second to Councilman Ayler. Councilman Russell?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayler? Any discussion? You want to call the row, and I'll leave if you want.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
The next member on the Harriman Planning Commission is Bill Alexander. We're just reappointing him. His term will be from September 2016 to September 1st, 2019. Motion. Second to Councilman Wright, second to Councilman Russell. Councilman Wright? Councilman Russell? Any other discussion? Call the row.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next member is a council member, and a council member has to come from you all, so I need a recommendation of who you all want on the planning commission. It's not my point, it's somebody, you ought to point from amongst yourselves. If you want to think about that, and we can do that next month, that's, we can do that.
Can I make a motion that we do that?
We'll just move that one to the next one. Be thinking about a council member on the planning commission. I didn't know the council had appointed either, and we've been reading the laws and stuff. That's all on the planning commission. The next is the Beer Board. One point, reappoint Allen Williams. His term will be from September 2016. These are four-year terms to September 2020. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Second.
Second to Councilman Holly, Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly? Any discussion? Call the row.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
The next one on the Beer Board is Council Representative Tim Johnson. His term will be a two-year term, September 2016 through September 2018. Motion. Motion, Councilman Ayler, Councilman Wright, second. Councilman Ayler?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I don't even drink beer.
Call the row.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next committee is the Harriman Recreation Advisory Board. I'd like to recommend Scott Gwynne, which is replacing Councilman Sam Russell. His seat will be for a two-year seat, September 2016 to September 2018. Motion. Motion, Councilman Wright, second.
Second.
Councilman Ayler? Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Call the row.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then I want to, like to recommend Sam Russell as a council appointee, which he doesn't have any voting right, he's just a expat-y old member of it. Need a motion to have Sam on.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ayler, second. Councilman Wright, Councilman, yes, sir. I mean, Councilman Johnson, second, I'm sorry. Councilman Johnson. Any question? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm almost done. The Harriman Golf Board, recommend Billy Ledbetter, who is replacing Warren Smith. His term will be from September 2016 to September 2020. Motion. Motion by Councilman Russell, second.
Second.
Second to Councilman Ayler. Councilman Russell?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Harriman Golf Board, Council Representative Sam Russell, September 2016 to September 2018.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ayler?
Second.
Second to Councilman Holly, Councilman Ayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly? Any questions? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The Harriman Utility Board, it has been customary that the top of it get to go on that board, but we haven't done that the last couple of years, but I'm recommending Lonnie Wright, which will be replacing Buddy Holly for the term of September 2016 to September 2018. Motion, Councilman Russell, second. Second to Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell?
Yes, sir.
Councilman, any other? Call the row.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
All right, that's all the form of the schedule, get to the last thing on the agenda. Next thing on the agenda, discuss and approve hospital facilities.
This item was initially put on the agenda because we had had someone inquire about utilizing the hospital in the coming weeks for filming, and that particular group has since decided not to, does not need the location. But because we do get these requests fairly often, and generally with short lead time, what I'm asking the council to do is grant authorization either to myself or to the mayor to approve these requests, as long as they conform to our standard procedure. That procedure involves signing a facilities use agreement that was adopted by the city attorney, providing us with a copy of their liability insurance, and we charge a fee of $500 per day for the use of the facility. So as long as we don't have any other activity going on in the hospital, and they can meet that criteria, then I would recommend the council authorize someone to approve those, because oftentimes, we don't have council meeting coming up, and as a result, we could end up losing out on some money we would put towards the facility.
Who would you recommend that we, you, I'm thinking you or Rebecca?
I would probably say me or Rebecca generally handles all the paperwork, but it will come to me to sign off on.
I make a motion that we make Kevin responsible for the...
A motion, second.
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilman Ayler, second to Councilman Holly, Councilman Ayler?
Excellent. Thing you get to do, Kevin. Enjoy.
Just watch the thing, I'm just... Councilman Holly?
I have a good idea.
Any discussion? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Last thing on the agenda, discuss and approve the 911 appointment. I'd like to recommend David Bailey, which is our fire chief. He will be taking the seat of Randy Hodel, which was the police chief. It will be effective September 2016 to September 2018. Motion. Motion by Councilman Ayler, second.
Second.
Second to Councilman Holly. Any discussion? Uh, Councilman Ayler?
Thank you, Chief.
Councilman Holly? Any other discussion? Call the row, please.
Chris Saylor?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
That's all on the agenda. Want to say again, flowers downtown look good, this park is looking good with the flowers. I'm looking for great things for our city. See, council member have anything?
Dana's gonna have a visit, I was gonna let Dana get up and tell us about her ribbon cutting before we leave.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we, United Way is doing their grand opening on September 20th. Ribbon cutting is at 11 o'clock, but we will be there all afternoon, so if you can't make it at 11, just come on by in the afternoon, we'll have refreshments and some fun networking time, so.
Let everybody know where you're gonna be, where you are.
431 Devonia Street. Yes, thank you.
We really appreciate you coming into our town.
Hey, it wasn't, it was, it was thrust upon me, and I'm glad, I'm glad it happened the way it did, so.
The building looks good, the parking lot looks good, it is exciting, the sign looks good. It puts some life back on that corner, and we do thank United Way for coming back there.
If I may just say, I'm very grateful to Dr. Faust and Dr. Thompson, they donated the building to United Way, and just wanted to thank them again.
Thank you for all you did. If nothing else, a motion to adjourn. Motion, second. All right.